Would you stand for the flag of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion to reconvene open session. Second. Show your hands. I have the show your hands. And for those of you who don't necessarily know, I'm not Mrs. Locra. She is away in my family illness situation in Seattle. So, I'm a villain, so be patient with me. Okay, this evening we have special recognitions.
The week of January 22 through 28, 2017 has been set aside as School Board Recognition Week. The collective goal of all districts in the state of Missouri is to build awareness and understanding of the important functions that elected Board of Education plays in communities and schools. As such, at this time, we wish to present each member of the Board of Education certificate that recognizes their individual and collective service to the Hillsborough R3 School District. In addition, a proclamation has been issued stating their appreciation for their service to public education. So, please give them a round of applause.
On behalf of MSBA, we would like to express our appreciation for your service to our district and especially to our students. As a thank you, MSBA has made a donation in your name to the Hillsborough Foundation. So, once again, thank you very much.
Thank you. And we go to the action items by consent items. Do we have a motion to approve as presented? Consent agenda items. Motion. Do we need the following of those? Are we moving? How about I make the motion? I move to accept the agenda items as presented. Any discussion? Questions? Hearing none, seeing none? Those in favor? Okay. Reports from Dr. Corman?
Right. I'd like to take just a moment, if you would. I'd like to invite our images up. I think Greg's here and Roy. They're going to give just a brief run-through of the slides that are going to be presented at February the 2nd Town Hall meeting and have just a little bit of discussion.
We've got a copy of our PowerPoint presentation that hopefully will come up here on the screen here and we can run you through. Good evening. Dr. Corman mentioned we're approaching next Thursday evening our first of three Town Hall meetings where we will begin to, as the top of the slide says, explore, decide, and implement some of the ideas that we've been generating and reviewing the board over the last several months regarding the master facilities plan. And we're getting excited about the event and a lot has happened. Prepare for this and we wanted to run through with the board tonight kind of the final draft of the presentation to see if there are any last-minute comments, additions, or deletions you wanted to make. Over here to your backside, back over here is a few examples of some of the other products that have been put up in each of the school lobbies to be part of the process. Board with our brochures that the board has seen in the past, I think those are up in every location and will be kind of carried around in different events and just announces our three Town Hall meetings, inviting folks in the community to be part of the process. The brochure, as you've seen, has details about what we're doing, what the April bond issue is all about, how we're structuring it, what some of the ideas are, and why it's an excellent opportunity for everyone in the community to get involved at this very important juncture, you know, for the school district. The board to the left of that is just some development I wanted to show the board tonight regarding some of the exhibits we're going to have next week at the forum. And these will be shown also in the slideshow, but we felt for each of the individual schools, we'll print out the boards, we'll have some of the ideas, the projects that we're talking about for each location. And then before and after the event, my design team and some of our facilities committee can be available to the public to come up and talk one-on-one during that event since that's what it's all about. And we can have a graphic that will be up on the display. So, we'll have five or six boards like that displayed out here that show each institution, facilities, and then we can have one-on-one conversations and really draw more information out than maybe even in the public session for it. So, those are a few things that we've developed since. As we just run through briefly, we'll talk about, Dr. Corman and I will be the emcees for that night, and we'll open up with an agenda discussion and explain what the process is and why we're here. Why are we going to be here for these three public forums? And understand the importance of that exchange of information as we head towards that April bond issue date. We'll talk about our mission, some of the accomplishments that we've had here at the district in the past regarding facilities, the process that we've been underway, our master planning agenda, talking about our team members' schedule, the objectives. Then we're going to discuss, obviously, the needs as they've been developed to date, and then talk about the next steps as we head towards the April vote. Again, we'll review the mission. I know I've developed this and talked to you, the board, about this several months ago. I really think it sets a good basis for our committees as we work towards these solutions to give us a general understanding of, again, why are we here, why are we doing this? And we'll go over that with the public on next Thursday. Dr. Corman's going to talk a little bit about some of the accomplishments, student achievement-wise, some of the enhancements in facilities that we've been able to achieve with the positive bond results that we've had in the past. I think it's important for us to reiterate the stewardship that the board has shown, you know, in the past on how we utilize the funding that the public has allowed in a good way. We need to remind each other of the good job that's been done and as it's obviously impacting the students' achievements in these learning environments. So, we're going to talk about that a little bit. Next slide is a little bit about the structure of Proposition Hawks. You can see in the upper right-hand corner, we've developed a logo for the proposition. We'll be using that and putting it all in all the documentation from here till April. But we want to explain, you know, how is this working? What is the structure of it? What does the no tax mean? And Dr. Corman's going to go into that, also review a little bit about the patron survey results that we've had to date. Excellent response and obviously a high positive response. So, we want to take a few moments next Thursday and explain that to the public. I'm going to then talk about the team and start getting into how we've developed the process and the inclusion and collaborative environment that we've created, gathering information from lots of sources, and obviously with our public forums, getting direct feedback via the surveys and these public forums through the Board of Education as we move towards implementation of some of our solutions. But I think that's important for everybody to see that we've included a lot of people. There's more work to do. We have more inclusion, more meetings, more sessions, more ideas to gather. Just a couple of weeks ago, we met with the principals, the administration staff from all the schools, talked over the planning ideas and our welcoming thoughts that are being sent to Facilities Department. We're going to incorporate some of those ideas as we continue to get them. Again, it's a continual gathering of information. The flow goes on, I like to say. We'll talk a little bit about schedule, where we've been, how this process has happened, and that we're obviously heading towards the April vote. We're at our first of three public forums. We'll explain that and all the interactions with the different groups that we've had to this date. The basic objectives are to create healthy learning environments. We'll explain some of the philosophy behind doing a facilities master plan, how it's a balance of board policy, facilities, conditions, and curriculum, all to create a student-centered education. I'll talk about some of the topics that we cover in a planning process. But again, bottom line, we're trying to create a better environment for our kids to learn. Much like the board that we have up and the banner we now have hanging here in the corner, remind everybody of the campus, talk about the studies that have been done in the past, our ongoing study, and how we've categorized our needs into our four basic categories that I've reviewed with the board in the past, that being learning and wellness, code compliance, safety and security, technology and maintenance, why those categories are important, and how this process works, and how it's organized. I went over this diagram also in the past. I think it's very important for everyone to understand that this is a working tool. Our four categories represent our needs. We prioritize those needs. Right now, the funding mechanism that we're looking for in April appears to give a value of in that $12 million range. So, it's how do we prioritize our needs, work with the funding that's available, and implement what we think is the best value? And that ideas that aren't in that $12 million will be circulated back through, and when we have another funding mechanism, those ideas will be prioritized. Again, I'll explain it's like owning a home. Once you repair the roof, then you'll get time again where you'll have to repair the roof again. It's not permanent. Similar with all your facilities. And we tie that together with how curriculum is changing, how we're teaching our kids different. These facilities are always evolving. I think it's important for everyone to understand that this is an ongoing process. We're tracking many ideas. Okay? We'll show examples of the matrix that we reviewed with you folks, how we prioritize it for our tier-one projects, our facility improvements we want to make. And then the next slide is a continuation of our four categories, and the following one is just an example of the list that captures the remaining ideas that may or may not be part of that initial phase of work, but that we're aware of them and we're going to keep those listed as good stewards of the facilities. I think Dr. Corman's going to talk a little bit about the property on Highway A as one of the objectives the board has had and explain that in a little detail for the public. And then Roy, my associate's going to go through. These are examples on the slide, what I showed you over here on the board. He's going to go through each of the facilities in a little more detail and talk about what some of the priority needs are at each of the locations. And so, everyone has a general idea of the type of work by our four categories, what we hope to accomplish if we are successful in April. So, that's just an example, and each school will talk about individually to the public, again, to give them an awareness of what are some of the needs. And in a lot of cases, there's similar needs across the district. Some of the schools, like the junior high, have some additions, classrooms, et cetera. So, we'll point out what's similar and what's different about each of the locations. We'll kind of finish up with how do we continue our communication efforts? We'll talk about the brochure that hopefully everyone will have seen by that point. We will be mailing out and continuing to talk about these issues in different forums. We'll, again, highlight that this is the first of three with a second town meeting on the 28th, and then in March, mid-March, the 13th, our third town meeting. And then hopefully, we get people to go out there and spread the word, you know, to come to the remaining two as we add different information in each session. Then we'll open it up at this point to a Q and A, and myself and my associates along with our facilities committee will be there to answer questions that we have. And then at the end of that session, again, we'll close the public forum and we'll have them be able to come up individually and talk to us about concerns that they have or ideas that they have. And we'll be capturing all those ideas and thoughts and documenting those, and I'll report those back to the board, you know, as we continue to get that flow of information in our direction. I see it as about a 30-minute presentation, and then we'll have 30 minutes, an hour, whatever the energy in the room is for Q and A. That's really, I think, the most important part, that interaction. And we can pull the slides back up, and we really want it to be a Town Hall forum where it's open communication amongst everybody and make it an enjoyable event. We want people to be informed and excited, and we want to spread that word, so our next one, we add even more people. So, we're hoping for a great turnout, and that's kind of the gist of what I wanted to talk to you about tonight. Did I miss anything, Dr. Corman?
I think one thing we really need is to determine if the board is okay with the logo, Proposition Hawks.
Okay.
Make sure everyone's set's all right with that so we can put that on the next brochure.
He's talking about.
And I guess the next question is when you move toward, what do you feel is the most effective as far as the brochure mail? We have information from both the post office and the leader newspaper, and what do you feel would cover the most, I guess, have the most impact? Would it be send it to every person that has Hillsborough address, or would it be put it in the newspaper as a flat mail flyer?
You know, a lot of that depends on the popularity of the paper that you're sending it in, or every jurisdiction has different levels of that. I found the safest way is to send it to every location. So, there's no way you missed it not in the paper or whatever. We want everybody who possibly wants to know about this to get information. That's why we put the time and effort, you know, you guys have into that brochure, we want it to be seen. My recommendation, we could send it to every address so we get maximum exposure to that.
What's your thoughts on sending it just to the individuals that voted in the last three elections? Is that more of a target audience, or do you think at this point, we're trying to get community input, so therefore we want to get it to all community?
You know what? What I've found in elections is that one election to another, you'll have about the same percentage turnout, but they're different people. There's always a core group that comes out to vote. What we want is people to understand what this issue, these issues are about and capture those that have interest in them to come and talk or spread the word to the vote. And we cannot predict who that is. So, I try to selectively, especially with the dollars we're talking about to mass-mail this out, we need to mass-mail this out and capture every individual, because that's really what this is about. We're not trying to be in the science of who might be interested. We think everyone should be interested in this. This is important for the community, and each individual's important to that community, so we feel it's worth sending that out to them. They can then make that choice themselves. Okay? Well, I would get to as many people as quickly as we can. I think the reason we designed the little stand-up boards with the brochures on there so people can continually take those. We did do it a little bit controlled because I've had four boys and they would steal the whole amount out of their board at one time. So, we're controlling that in the offices, but taking the band counters, taking coral counters to events, sporting events, somebody in each location moving that around. Any way we're going to get that exposure out, I think is important.
Any questions? Anybody?
And definitely, everybody here to come to the event next Thursday.
It's on my calendar.
We're giving away a Corvette.
All right.
I'm just kidding.
I don't want the Corvette.
A hot wheel.
That's right. I need to tell you what size.
Appreciate it. I guess, kind of piggybacking on what Greg just talked about, we spent some time looking at what both what the leader publication would run the district if it were to send it out. And it covers, according to this, 11,200, I guess, I don't know if that's papers or individuals, I don't have clarity on that, but it says that's the amount needed to cover the routes of the Hillsborough district, 11,200. Now, the cost for delivery would be around $630-ish dollars. And I say that because it's based upon paper weight, the size, so if you're running a legal size, it's 630. If you're running a eight-and-a-half by 11, it's 570. So, it just kind of ranges on, and it has to be flat. Again, those ranges with, so 575 and 630, 11,200 people reached. Now, if you want to just send it through UPS, the cost is to every mailbox in the Hillsborough zip code is $1,062.53, and that's 6,003 mailboxes. Now, what we have to do some work on is we're going to have to look at our district map because we're going to have some folks, you know, for example, down in DeSoto, we have some DeSoto addresses, and we're going to have some Cedar Hill addresses. So, we're going to have to adjust accordingly. So, that is just a blanket, and you can only mail, I believe, 5,000 pieces at a time. So, we have to break it up in probably two, maybe three mailings, but you could do them, I guess, day, each day you could do 5,000. So, but that's just a rough guessment on what that would run the district. So, I kind of need some direction on as the second gets up close to us, would you rather put it into leader and reach those folks? Do you want us to mail it? Do you want to just target those that voted in the past three elections? I guess that's the direction.
If we're looking at the leader, the next delivery is the second.
Right.
So, if we want them at that first meeting, that wouldn't...
Would be very feasible.
Yeah.
That might be something you want to...
So, are you thinking of sending this out prior to all the town meetings or right before the election?
I mean, that was a discussion we had. We need to let people know when it's going to be.
I think as soon as we can get them out now, about to announce the first Town Hall meeting next Thursday.
And Greg, I apologize, I left a quote from the printers. Do you remember offhand what that was?
Ray, I have that. I brought that with me.
Thanks, Ray.
The group that we got the initial 500 brochures printed from Alpha Graphics, they sent me a quote, up to 2,000. They didn't send me up to 5,000 number, about $651 for 2,000. It drops as you, you know, per unit as you get more. So, I would imagine if we got, I could get you a quote, Dr. Corman, for, you know, tomorrow, I could have that for you, but if I just multiply, it's going to be probably $1,300, $1,400 for 5,000. If I'm just doing the math here, my own deductions.
Now, let me ask you this. Does that include voting? If they don't have to fold them, is it a...
This is folded.
Okay, so would it be a cheaper rate?
Probably would be.
And the reason I ask that is because I believe the post office said it had to be flat. They didn't want it folded, I believe. Excuse me, the newspaper wants them...
Flat.
So, I mean, their cost was to do 11,200 of them, that was $927 to print. Of course, again, they're just printing them, they're not having to fold them.
Probably, probably a little cheaper. That cost for, for how many was it?
11,200.
That's cheaper definitely than what this is.
And I bet it's because they're not having to fold them.
Yeah. We have these folded. I can check and get you a call tomorrow on what non-folded would be, you know, with it.
What's the turnaround time on the printing?
Two days.
So, if they just had to go out till Monday if we went to the post office?
Yeah.
It'd be Monday, Tuesday.
Monday, Tuesday, we have Fairmounts, the workshop.
We'd have to mail them Monday, the first round, and then...
Tuesday, second round.
But what's interesting is this has 5,000 at a time, but I think it's 5,000 per zip code. So, we could do more than 5,000 at one mailing, as long as they weren't all in the Hillsborough zip code.
Sounds like, though, the 5,000 gets you coverage. You had, I think you had a number of six?
There's 6,000 in actual Hillsborough mail.
So, that first mailing, if we got 6,000, that'd be what you want to quote. You don't want the 11,000 number.
Correct. 11,000's for the newspaper.
Right.
The first mailing, I think we're going to need about 7,500.
Okay. Let me, tomorrow morning, I can get that for you first thing in the morning, what 7,500 non-folded and folded would be. And I've already asked the turnaround time. It's 24 hours to 30 hours, so I can get that in a two-day period because I knew that would be an issue. So, we can get that back to you. I can have that for you by 9:30 tomorrow morning.
Right. So, we'll need some direction on what do you need us to do? How do you want us to proceed? Do you want them to, as Greg's saying, each mailbox?
Obviously, going through the leader, they're not going to make it. She's at homes in time before Thursday night, so we have to do the mailing.
Okay. All right. So, I'll get you a quote tomorrow. You give me a yes, and I'll tell them the green light to go ahead and print, so we get them here as soon as possible.
So, wait for it.
Well, I'll let you decide if you guys want to fold them. That's a lot to fold. They're going out...
They probably have a folding machine now.
Yeah, they probably do.
I've got a folding machine too, but it's the left and the right hand. It's not a mechanical...
I was going to say, 7,500, I might look at that number to fold them for you pretty hard. So, I'd leave that for you. I'm sorry.
Well, I was, is this district money?
Yes.
Board money because it doesn't say vote yes? So, it's informational, so we...
Correct. It is information that you would be able, in my understanding, to reimburse for any costs and expenses for. So, that'd be architectural fees, but...
If you run that through us, I don't get the tax break.
Right.
So, you have the contact number. I would just tell you to call them, and all you do is call them directly, and then you get the no tax portion of that, which is worth doing.
Okay.
That no tax portion might not have opened.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, that's how we'll proceed. I'll send you a message tomorrow, let you know what the calls are.
I'll get that for you.
We'll talk tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Just want to call your attention to a couple of items. First, you can read up on the communications team. I'm not going to go through all that for you. I think it was a great meeting. The app is available if you want to download the app. However, it is not complete. The format is there, but all information is not. So, you can go on either wherever iPhone iTunes is, or you can go on Google Play Store and download that information. Next, School Board candidate filing did close January 17th, and I've seen several members here, potential candidates. So, please, if you would, when I call your name, stand so we can recognize you. And let's go with our first on the ballot being Angie Oshie, who is the current incumbent. Next, we have Chad Nicholas. Chad's in the back. Jane Heine, I did not see Ms. Heine today. Zach Gibson, Zachary Gibson, I did see Zach in the back. Dennis Bradley, Mr. Bradley's in the back. Director Petrie, another incumbent. And John Schistler. John, is it closed?
Yep.
All right. I've been working on that for two weeks, John, so I'm glad I did get it right. And Dan McCarthy. So, please give them a round of applause. We appreciate you coming. Appreciate you being here this evening and taking interest in the school district. The ice storm, I did send you some information home on that. I do want to, as I spoke to you about, we did have one tree that was severely damaged that had to be removed down at the junior high Circle Drive. Actually, it almost split in half, right? Took one big main arm off the tree and just doesn't save, so we did have to remove that tree. And there were a few limbs on Leon Hall that had to be trimmed. All right. As you know, for the past few months, we've been talking about reviewing the long-term suspension and allowing alternative for students to come back on long-term suspension. And with that review, there are several factors that both the central office, the administrative team, and the school attorney believe could prohibit the implementation and it be effective mid-year. And what it comes down to is, you know, and the student handbooks are written one way. We're going to have to notify all parents of the handbook change. We're going to have to have signatures showing that they did receive the handbook change, any potential claims of perceived unfairness, where some kids earlier this year were allowed but didn't have the option to come back early, whereas the new students would. So, what we have done is continued to visit, and we want to present this as a handbook change for the 17, 18 school year, but we're still going to have the NCADA use as a resource to talk to the students about misconduct and misconduct prevention. And that's the ones that came and spoke about sexting, drunk driving...
Digital citizenship and marijuana use, and they've done all kinds of things.
Right. So, we're going to continue using them, but yet, as we spoke last month, well, our hope is to offer some type of program for students that have long-term suspensions for drug and alcohol. Now, something to consider is how far is the border? Are you willing to take that down? Where are you going to stop that? Junior high, you go in the fifth, sixth grade? You know, that's something that we're going to have to give you information on, on historical discipline issues based upon student demographics. So, I mean, I don't think you're going to need to put alcohol down to kindergarten. I would hope not. So, you know, it's something that we'll have to take a look at. And I believe that's about all I want to cover. Please take a close look at the very bottom. You know, there's a lot in here. This is from January the 1st with Governor Greig and some of the restrictions from state. So, please read through those. I'll get you more information as it comes out. I want you to focus down on legislative bulletin. There's a lot of good information in that, and I know MSBA sent out their bulletin. I know this report's like 18 pages long. I apologize for that. A lot of good information for you. Be sure to keep a close eye on... Be sure to keep a close eye on dates of interests, which is coming up with the legislative session. Things that you're gonna wanna know, things to keep up with, and also upcoming events. I try to keep this very current so you know what February upcoming is gonna look like. And I've also included some things in March, including our M-CIT 5 Special Education On-Site Evaluation that I know that Mr. White and his team's been planning for. So that'll be March 1 through to 3. So that's all I have for you, Cindy.
What about the legal services?
Legal services.
Thank you very much.
One other item that we need to bring up, and I didn't start on my report, so thank you. I included here for you Legal Services RFP. Has everyone had time to read that? What are your thoughts? There was, you know, you just said, hey doc, we wanna go out for a legal services bid, but this is what I came up with. Is this something you're okay with us moving forward and putting out and taking the RFPs on? Or do you wanna revise it? Would, I need some direction on that.
I was okay with it. I had, one thing that I would like to see is that in the interview process, when you get to that point, since none of us are lawyers. I suggested that we'd like to see maybe a local lawyer on the interview committee.
Sure, it's great.
Because, you know, we're educators or just normal people.
Right.
Parents. And...
I have one. So, yes. The, what I had in yellow was the dates and timeframe. Is everyone good with that? I mean, like I said, I just had to pick this off the calendar and try to roll with that. And it's very lengthy. What we plan to do is not publish, of course, all this in the paper, I wanna clarify that. Just the initial request for proposal, maybe that, that top page, but condense it. Everything else will be put on the district website as a downloadable file. So maybe that first page where it says notice, and then down to my name and information. All right, so if everyone's good with that?
And the other comment that I had was, I found in there that it specifically states, no communication with boarder staff if they're issuing an RFP. And, good.
Good. Good money, some water.
Right, it does. And, you know, sometimes we get overwhelmed with people from those avenues. So, that was just my personal opinion. Any other questions for Dr. Foreman? Okay, Ray, you're up front and center.
Good evening, wonderful. Well, May for December, so everybody's holidays are good. Just briefly a little bit, what we, we went through a little bit as well, as Dr. Foreman brought up the ice storm. We all enjoyed a little bit. In order to prepare for that, as everybody knew, we got a little bit of warning of it. We got some temperatures calling them, really gonna be single digits, windshields above and all the negative. So we prepared a little bit as ourselves as maintenance team. We went into some of the buildings concerned about the primary because we kept losing the heat exchangers and a lot of other things in the second grade hallway, multi-age hallway now, around 200 blocks. So we did get the new heat exchanger in and hopefully we'll have no more problems there to use. But just wanted to bring that up as a point of interest as we move forward. Fashion of primary, we have a lot of RTUs that sit there up on that roof that helps us with the air conditioning vents that everybody knows for heating and cooling. Issue with those is, most of those are about 26 years old already or older. The issue is they're good for about 15. So as you can tell, they're already past their age for one, for just being there. That's why we're having so much problem with breakdown. But the biggest problem we have is parts, trying to find parts. We looked for the heat exchanger, had to wait almost two weeks. As you can imagine, it's not a good learning environment for our staff and our students at all. So I know, thank you to the primary, but they did tilt a lot of headaches with this thing. So I hope as we go forward with the bond issue that we, we all look at that and keep that in mind. We did try to put in some like insulation panels in up on the ceiling to try to block the airflow coming in from the roof area through the walls. We brought in portable heaters. They left doors open at night time. We left the heat run a little bit longer than we should on the ones that would run good. Same thing with intermediate, just because I think all of you might remember the situation at intermediate a few years ago with the water pipes and the sprinkler system breaking. Well, not on what. We did not have that this time because we did do some hopefully permitted, permitted items. Including keeping the heat up a little bit longer, running around the clock. So yeah, we're gonna pay for that a little bit. I apologize to you already. But we saved the building and we will continue to do that. So we'll tell you, we will continue to those major steps coming in play. So, but that's what we did a little bit, trying to protect at least the primary and intermediate. The other buildings seem to hold their own pretty good. Systems do well with us. We can gain them up pretty quick and get heat effects with these buildings here. But we will continue to try to do insulation, blocking more windows, stuff like that. I will let you know, we will make a majors to keep that up and clean up. I would like to take a personal note, just to let everybody know, the board wise, I think the board's first of all, I think is a great thing they did. The Chamber of Commerce does the Christmas dinner every year, after many years. And the SCARC do outstanding job for us helping us out. And I wanna let you know that I did hear that they did about 250 mils that day. I thought that was awesome. So I just wanted to tell the board thank you, and I know all them that do help out, that come in and do. I don't personally do it myself, I just help them get all things set up for our stage. So I don't help them serve, but the ones that do, they're a great job, so I just wanted to tell everybody that. Great job. MRU is already working on checking what they call underground facilities inspections. And what they're doing in, in those cases, they've done the west campus. They go under and they check all the lines, the main feed lines, to make sure there's nothing that's getting into and free root, stuff like that. Because as you know, a lot of those are underground. So they've completed the two inspections on the west side. They'll give me the report as soon as they recap it, but they said it all looked good and everything. So that's a good start. They will continue to move to the east campus, probably within the next month or two and everything. So, but it looks good. L-B A inspections are all completed. Any infractions have been completed and corrected. So we have all our specifics in, in line. Then we come to the fun part, the high school. That's pretty well our last book, our next focus. As we all looked at many paths that we had to deal with, the theater lighting. As we all remember, that was a nice issue. It is underway. We've got a lot of things going on in the positive there. They have their lighting system in that case. They had to put the pads in, which is all of our tin keys and our sliders and stuff like that so they can, them control the lighting system. When the process of working on that, we thought that'd be an easy fix. ATC came in to do, put them all on a wall and found out that our system's not compatible with the old one. So, so we had a little setback, but Ronnie and Alan, who's two of my electrician techs for the district, and myself, we started pulling new wires through the, all the conduits. And we've got three of the five stations pulled. We're just waiting for the wire to come in. We'll have to put two strands of 16 gauge in. We have to put in two runs of CAT 5 through these conduits to make all these things work properly. So, but we'll go pull them through there. It'll cost us about, extra about $500 to run the wiring. But we will have it up and running, hopefully within the next couple of weeks. So, waiting on wire. Kitchen drink system was all completed by Granite Press. As we all know, we are still waiting on Lewis Flooring to complete the finishing topping. So it all looks like it's supposed to. They're waiting for the material. Where they buy their material from, that company is kinda dragging their feet, I guess, for a speech. Don and them have been trying to get them to get that to us as quickly as possible. And then they'll bring it in and get it all set up and we'll be good. So, sorry about the delay. Kitchen people are working one of them. Gym doors are all been taken care of in gym one at the high school. They all locked down now, so we can protect our gym. That's good. The sound system was a good, Ronnie and Alan and I worked on it. And come to find out after doing another series of testing, the DFR was bad. So the good advantage of that says the sound system cost them $2,000, $3,000, which we thought might at first, cost us $96 with this. So, the sound system comments are great, no problem. All right. First, on an invitation to the state and county, which I think Dr. Foreman brought up on Gus, so I hope all of you get to come to that on February 20th as well, too. We did complete the 155 work orders throughout the month with all the other fun things we got to do. And we also was able to upgrade the bus garage alarm system. So we have a alarm system on every man door down to bus garage now. So first ones that know about the intruder we had in the facility a month ago. We have a better system now than we've ever had down there, so we should be well protected. So, they can't even get in the door yet, so. All right, and I'd like to take a minute, not take anything away from all the board members, but we appreciate all you this week and everything you do for us as well. But I wanted to give Aaron Moore, who's our technician, or networking specialist, I guess I would say that, correct? Aaron with his ice storm, spent many hours here putting together, had to be, come in and get all our servers coming up and worked on, I don't know how many switches. Aaron probably have to tell you all that technology stuff. But I wanted to applaud him for being here for us. It was a Saturday. He's spent many hours here helping us, getting this up, because we need all that. We didn't have internet. We had an alarm system not working. We had everything, basically. We have, we run in this community. So, Aaron, thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you very much. So, can I bring the...
Go ahead.
Thank you. All right. Now we talked about one tree being cut down because of the ice storm. We have another situation we'd like to bring to your attention. And this is a removal of two trees. They sit south side of the data center where we park our technology vans. They've been there for many years, okay? But the problem with them, they're getting a little older and they're getting a little weaker. All right. Normally they drop them limbs all the time, every time we get windstorms, stuff like that. The best, worst part about them, they also lap, they drop a lot of sap, which damages our vehicles a lot. Now, if we had a big parking lot in the data center, probably wouldn't be questioning this, but we don't. And they have the ability to use those van, and we wanna take care of those vans because we have to as a district maintain them for many years to come. And talking with Kathy and myself, we have approached Dr. Foreman to ask if we could go forward with this and ask you as a board to consider allowing us to take these down. Now, we have two options, taking them down, of course, we can do some of those ourselves. They're 50-foot trees, two-foot diameter. We just have to clear everything out of the way because we're not the best tree people in the world, okay? Or we can have an outside service look at it. I did have a couple people look at it, just to give me a brief idea. And they said it's probably about $1,000 for them to come in, cut it down, you know, fall it off, stuff like that. So, and then, but the thing is, we will be happy, in most cases, like we will to junior high, we are going to plant another tree back in this place, okay? And we will do the same thing here. We will just be moving farther back, so it will not affect transportation of vans. So we would like you as a board to consider our request to allow us to remove these trees.
Any direction on that?
Comments?
I guess if anyone's actively opposed to it, and if so, we'll put it on the agenda for next meeting to have further discussion.
And you'll have bids to do that? Because that, I mean, $3,000 for two trees sounds like a lot. We did our whole yard for 3,500, and I've got lots of trees.
Yes, we need to do that. That is no problem. We just feel the way you want me to look at it.
Yeah, yes.
Yes, okay, we will do that. All right. I believe that's all I have this time. If anyone has any questions?
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, appreciate the time.
You're gonna stay right there and talk? Okay. Okay, good evening. We've had 169 completed work orders between December 9th and January 13th. We're continuing our training, and Karen is gonna be doing one on Excel tips and tricks. She'll be doing that tomorrow. Trip tracker is kind of in the final stages of getting ready. We've kind of got our end completed, and now they're testing to make sure the approval process is working. We worked on setting up iPads for the second grade to get the test navigator program on there for the AMSW Plus. We had a classroom set up that had video streaming between two classrooms. And I put a picture on there of a little cage protector that Aaron Johnson had built for us to protect that projector in that classroom. And regarding our server for Infinite Campus, every five years that server has to be replaced. And we were due for a replacement, and December 27th, we got our new server in. So that's about another five years. One of the things that we're looking into now is we're kind of piloting Chromebook printing. And right now, none of the classrooms can print from the Chromebooks, but this is kind of in a test stage. And we wouldn't be doing it district-wide, it would be certain rooms. And it's really just in testing stages now because there are some districts that report some issues with it. So Aaron's been doing some work on that to see if that's... Yeah, in beta testing. We started on the installation of the smart boards. All the rails have been installed. And now, starting Friday, we actually get to start hanging up the smart boards. So, that's good. Okay, so Ray kind of stole my thunder for Aaron. I had him there about the ice storm. And Aaron had come in and spent a lot of time on that Saturday to get everything up and running, which is great. So when the teachers came in, it's like nothing even happened. We may have one classroom or two with issues, but he did a great job on that. One other thing we're having a problem with is the intercom at the intermediate. There are two amplifiers on it, and both amplifiers went down. So we had a company come in, look at it, and they recommended replacing them both. It was $5,600. And so I had another company come in, and he looked at it and said, hey, why don't you talk about just sending the amplifier back in and see if you can get it repaired? And it was $85 for one of them. We're still waiting on the other one. We went ahead and sent it in, too, now since we knew we were gonna have such a good savings on it. Which then leads me to the intercom at the high school. So then we had an issue with the intercom at the high school with the buttons not working on the phone. Again, the first company came out, gave us a quota of $416. Said they weren't able to fix the phone, but Aaron Johnson was able to go in there and get it working for us. So, saved us some money there, too. And I believe that's about it. Any questions?
Thank you. Um, if...
How are you doing?
Financial?
Kathy's syndrome.
As far as your financial statement, the revenue expenditure, all detailed reports for this month. Our revenue is running a little behind for December, but that is because of the timing of the county payments. We never know if we're gonna get more money in December or in January. A quick call to the county confirmed my suspicion that we, we actually just got another payment this week. I've talked to some other schools, we were all running behind. So revenue will be running right on track as of January once we get that payment recorded. Expenditures running as expected for the year so far. As far as at the state level, I wasn't able to get this in on Board Book because I was still waiting on Desi's report because it only comes out on the 20th and the Board Books went out on the 19th. So, state level, general revenue had been running ahead, which was really good, but we fell flat in December and they, revenue was down. The financial people are saying it's due to dropping corporate income tax and capital gains payouts. So we'll just continue to watch that. And we look forward to seeing what Governor Greitens' budget looks like when it comes out, the first week in February, next week, I guess. He hopes to have it out by the first. Prop C revenue is trending ahead, but that includes food tax, so we anticipated that to be a little higher. Transportation funding took a hit with the supplemental that was, that Greitens just released. And that means maybe about 14,000 for us. So, that's heading down for the year from what I had projected. As far as in central office, the parent staff's working on getting out the W2s to all of our staff, and we worked on 1099s this week also.
Any questions? Any questions? Okay.
I guess when interviews we have to fill in.
I would love for you to meet our alternatives. So Mr. Fontz is away at state competition for fire, state fire. And this is Ms. Mary Aquilano filling in. She is our alternate. She will be here in highly or better accent.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So Ben and I have been in dis...
So Ben and I have been in discussion of creating a Google Classroom. It would be used to receive one-way recommendations from students, just on what they want to see from the schools. It could also be used to disperse information that may be relevant to students. We could also disperse district events or just weekly announcements for what's going on in the schools. We've also been in discussion of using the TV above the attendance window in the high school to have a constant PowerPoint running, and that would also just hold information, how they can get in contact with us, other things that they can just talk to us about, that type of stuff. We are also discussing meeting with each of the class presidents from the high school to see what each of the classes would like specifically. And that would also be a way to disperse information to the students if anything new comes to us or if we make a discussion about anything, decisions, that type of thing. So meeting with class officers is one of the things we'd like to see happen. And possibly some of the club officers as well, because clubs and sports are very important at the high school and junior high level. So we would like to meet with either club presidents or like team heads, like.
Yeah, like your sports captains, your club officers, your class officers.
So we'd like to meet with them and see what the clubs would maybe need help with as far as the school, what we can do to help them. And we've also been in the process of collecting students' opinions about the possibility of changing the graduation location and date for the 2018 school year. So Ben and I have been asking students, and if the Google Classroom is created, we could set out a poll to the students and get a percentage of what the students themselves would like to see for that. So that is another thing that we're working on.
So will you be polling just the, you won't be polling the current seniors, correct?
Yes, correct. So that is about all that we have.
Well, thank you. For your first report, you'd be wonderful.
Thank you.
I enjoyed reading your team for being, you know, a high school teacher. Now, how soon do you expect the Google Classroom to be up? Do you guys have an idea?
It is currently in discussion, so we aren't 100% set on it yet, but hopefully within the next two weeks, if possible, but.
If I may interject, Mrs. Laura Habe, who's one of our labor media specialists, has agreed to be their adult advisor so that someone besides myself is actually supervising their communications. And I will also be involved. But Mrs. Ringgill has been phenomenal also. She's met with us, we've had a committee meeting, and we're just looking at the feasibility of what types of communications we can set up for them based on what they're interested in seeing and how they think it would work best. But of course, Dr. Furman, you have to make those approvals, so.
I love the idea. I'd be interested in the poll of the students for graduation. I know that's been on our agenda for many months.
They're looking for a venue that they can disperse information and then receive information back. What we don't want is a dialogue opening because then we have to keep, and we're going to have to watch it really closely anyway because students like to make off the wall comments, but we'll have a delete button, and we'll be able to, you know, watch that very closely. But they want a controlled atmosphere, I think is what you're looking for.
Yes, it wouldn't be an open forum. It would be a one-way communication from them to us, and then they'd have to put their email on there so we can see who is saying what as well. So it would just be like anonymous from them to us.
I was wondering if the students were going to be identified when they emailed you.
Yes, and then students can't see other students post to us, so they can't communicate to each other using the classroom.
Perfect.
One thing you had in the report that you didn't mention that I thought was really cool is the idea of you guys spearheading, letting the students know more about the school bonds and how the bond would affect them.
Yes.
And how to get that out to them. For one, the students they can vote, and two, to pressure, not pressure, but tell their parents about it.
Inform.
Inform.
Well, hopefully it's going to benefit the students who are in the building, so.
Yeah. We were thinking we could use Google Classroom and possibly consider opening a Twitter account so that we can inform the students about the bond campaign as well. Ben and I discussed walking around during RTI time to speak with each of the classrooms and maybe get them to sign up for the Google Classroom. That's how they would be even signing up. And talk to them about the bond campaign so that they could inform their parents, which could increase the amount of parents that go to the meetings that you guys have for the bond campaign as well.
Make sure you leave time in RTI for your home.
Well, thank you.
Okay. No unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. And the first item is approval of kindergarten enrollment dates. Do I have a motion to approve kindergarten enrollment dates, which are March 22nd through the 24th, April 3rd through 7th, 2017? They will have a screening-only day on August 3rd, 2017, from 8:30 to 4:00 p.m. Motion? Renee, second? Discussion? We need to hear from anybody, or? Everybody good? Those in favor? Those 100%? Okay. Next item of business is the prom venue. A motion to approve prom venue for 2018, which is the Magic House and the agreement, which is included.
I think the motion is approved.
Okay. Do you want to say that I like the location because it is closer and not so far in the city for our students and their safety and traffic and things like that? So whoever's in charge of that, I do like the location of this venue. I did have a question, though. When I was reading through it, it identified 200 chairs, and I thought each time we ever talked about prom, there was like 300-plus students attending.
But they don't sit.
Well, I understand that, but they don't eat there, there's not food served.
They have finger foods, and they have, like at the Magic House, last time we had it there, there's also a garden area.
Right.
So they have benches, a whole lot of benches set up around there, and then there's an eating area. They have lots of tables.
How long ago has it been since it's been, just a rough estimate, I don't care.
Listen, you were in for two years.
Oh, is that all?
It's 2004.
2004, oh, they're here.
Oh.
Dr. Morgan's here.
Well, I graduated from 2014.
I didn't realize you were here.
I'm one of the prom sponsors.
Well, would you like, you want to tell us anything?
2014, I believe, so it's only been two years. And what we do is we have, if we do it the same way, we are looking at making the dance floor into a different room because it's a much bigger room for the amount of people that are dancing. But we still hope to have the, we had two buffets last year, so we had one on the upper level and one on the lower level. So what's really nice about the location is the fact that you can basically get away from, like, the students that don't get along and don't, the kids that don't go along have their own space because it's a bigger location that they can completely get away from each other and then still enjoy their evening. So we had students that had never been to dances before in their lives attend prom and say it was the best time of their lives because if they, even if they didn't like the music or the dancing, there was enough to do to keep them occupied.
And parking was awesome.
Yes, because there's two parking lots as well.
There's huge parking lots there, and it was fantastic.
But the tables, like, the only times we ever have enough seating for every single person to sit down are the years. Like, this year, we're having a full dinner. Because the location itself was a little bit cheaper, so we were able to compensate for the cheaper location with a larger, the actual full dinner. There has never been a time, though, that even with the fingered foods, that we haven't been overly full and had leftovers go over. So we, I tell kids all the time, I don't eat before prom, and even if it's fingered foods, you don't have to eat because there's going to be plenty of food to not go hungry, even with the fingered foods.
Okay, any other questions? Those in favor of approving the? Approving the Magic House as the venue for 2018? Yes. Okay, next item is the district lawn care services. I need a motion to approve the bid of MLS landscaping for the district's 2017-18 lawn care services. Motion? Second? Discussion? Ray, you have any comments?
The only thing I can tell you is we don't know a whole lot about these, but their references are heightened, so their references are good.
And the current A&amp;L that we're using, they didn't put in a bid properly?
They didn't put a bid in, I don't understand that part.
Okay, well, I was just, that was just kind of odd.
It was odd to me, too.
What are we currently paying for ANK?
Does ANK?
What are we currently paying for them?
$1,100.
Ray, I know MLS pretty well.
He did. Had a reputation.
Any other questions? Those in favor? Next item is the Associate of Arts Degree Program with JUCO. A motion to approve entering into agreement with Jefferson College to provide students the opportunity to earn Associate's of Arts Degree in conjunction with a high school diploma, which will be one-third of the current tuition rate. And this is something where the college basically reduces by a third, the parents pay a third, and the district pays a third. Motion? Eric, second? Okay. Want somebody to talk to us about this, or?
We basically, we put 10 students in there just for, for a number. We will have to spell out some things to parents to consider if their child is eligible for this, meaning some of our students are A-plus eligible, which pays 100% of your junior college. If they go this route, the parents are paying a third. So we're going to have to map out some of those things that parents are very clear on, on requirements.
And if, my understanding is this is going to be kind of your top students because they're going to be doing high school along with?
Yes, ma'am, they will have two qualifications in the executive summer here. They will have to meet those qualifications.
So you may have 10, you may have a lot fewer than that. Would it ever go more than that?
Correct. We capped it at 10 because of the financial cost.
Which is the financial update. Now, is it the first 10 that apply that meet the requirements, or do you have 20 who apply who meet the requirements? How do you determine the 10?
Then we are going to have a selection process. Dr. Freeman and Mrs. Jason.
And I know this program is piloted now, this year, with DeSoto and, is it Fox?
Yes. Yeah, Fox started and then DeSoto joined last year. It's going to be a very specific student and their parents who decide to use this, and there are a couple options within the program. So there's Associate of Arts where you can go fewer hours. It's really going to be conversations, it's going to be communications going to be key with these students because we need to know what their desire is, if they want to enter college in the junior, if they want to enter college as fresh, retaining freshman status so that they can apply for scholarships available with freshmen. And there's a lot of things to consider.
And that last comment, I know, has been one of the biggest concerns of parents, that if they are coming out with an associate, then will my child be eligible for freshman scholarships? And they are depending on the school.
Miss Amay Singer's here, and she's spoken to many of the colleges and universities around the state. I'm sorry, it just depends on the school the child wants to transfer to. For example, UMSL will give them scholarships at a certain level, kind of like a transfer scholarship, whereas Missouri State considers them a freshman still, and they're eligible for freshman scholarships. So it's really individualized, depending on the receiving school they choose to transfer to, so. And they've all, they're used to this now, it's a thing for them, so they have standards. Even as far as they take them, a lot of universities, though, what I've found, they are considering them freshmen because they'd like for them to live on campus the first year, and that's their way to do that, so.
Yes, yes, bottom line.
So will most schools accept all of this?
That's my understanding.
State public universities.
In state public universities.
So with that, too, I've been very nosy about that, and a lot of times, it depends on the major. For example, if a kid wants to do engineering, mechanical engineering, we're going to have a package of the Associate's Degree Program, so there'll be specific electives. The kids don't necessarily get to choose. That will try to, we'll try to target our audience as much as possible, but they won't get to choose. So there is just an option to do your core, core classes, probably 42-hour block, and then the students can then transfer those 42 hours to the university, so then they can choose individualized electives. So they're still ahead and maybe considered a high sophomore, you know, sophomore-ish, and they're no good type of thingy, so.
And is the, this an online program? That's what, so they're still on campus?
Yes. If we offer a class on campus, then they're able to, through Jefferson College, they're able to attend the class.
So, high school scheduling, they'll have a block that they would be assigned to do this?
They'll be in the LNC, yeah. Thank heavens for the Chromebooks. That's what's going to make this very feasible, if this works.
I have a good friend whose daughter is doing this, and it has been phenomenal thus far. But it is a challenge. It's not an easy, it is a challenge.
It's a challenge, and like I said, Mrs. Hilda Brandon, Mrs. Amay Singer and I have discussed it late. It is, Mrs. Ginch, it is for a certain student with certain interests because when you roll that student out and they're graduating from Hillsborough High School and they already have all their Gen Es underneath there, they better know what they're ready to do because that leaves little wiggle room when you're walking into your freshman year. You have to pretty much have an idea of the area that you want to major in because you're going to be taking those courses. And of course, everyone, you know, everybody changes their major a couple times, some, not everyone, a lot of people. But they're already ahead of the game, so you really have to have some sort of idea. So this is for a specific audience.
And then we talk about the financial aspect of it. Because it will be, if there are 10 students, say roughly 14, 5 a year.
And that's per cohort group, right?
Right, per group.
Get into that second year, you're looking at doubling that.
Double that for each student that's in that group. For that group of, I didn't say that right. And so Karen is going to tap into her secret pots again.
So that 1,400 is for a year?
Who's next year?
For a total of 10 students, it'd be $14,000.
And like, for the parent responsibility, like the third, the 1,400, that's for the year?
Yes.
$14,400, 400, 400, 10. That will fluctuate if possible. Okay, other questions? Concerns? Okay. Do those in favor? And next item is the Participation in the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Program. A motion to approve the participation in the workforce and opportunity program for the summer of 2017. Renee, and second? And you have the agreement in your packet as well. Questions, concerns? This is something I understand that is pretty much done every year. It's just simply has changed or tweaked something.
Ray, you want to talk to that just for a little bit?
Sure. This is a program that's been in effect for about 30 years. It's basically between Jefferson and Franklin County, and they've done this program for many years. But it's used to be called Manpower. It's just been converted, and it's teaching, training a young person for about 12 weeks with our help. So it's a good program.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? Those in favor? Next item is a discussion item, and that is the use of P-cards.
Hey, I just, just kind of clarification, the stars and key cards. You know, why, what benefits we have with those? Is it a convenience-type thing over maybe a purchase order-type system with the controls in place or kind of thing?
Okay. Well, I guess the benefit, the P-card does reimburse the district per the amount that it is utilized. That amount is about $6,000.
The check we received last year was for $6,246. We're fetching our new one anytime, and they're upping the rebate amount next year.
So the purchase card allows us to fund the teacher recognition, most of it, for the teachers. The purchase card, yes, it is a convenience, because when we have a heat exchanger, we have a need for something in the maintenance department, Ray does not have time to wait on PO process and the board, too. But yet, each building does budget for P-card utilization, which are the things. And we have, you also asked about some of the parameters that are in place, so I'll let Mrs. Ginch speak to those.
I mean, we have, we still do POs. They still do POs.
They still do P.O.s, because the way we utilize P-cards, we actually have to cancel it so it doesn't post in our system, but we do P.O.s still. A lot of things that they pay for with these cards, we pay for copier agreements, our, you know, wireless service, a lot of technology stuff that they can only order online. It's very beneficial for that, if we're able to pay for textbooks, you know, we get the...
Big chunk of that.
Yeah, yeah, if we're able to. We haven't mastered the utilities because they charge a fee, and it's per, like, per line, so each building has one and it's not feasible. It's useful for, really useful for maintenance, because we would get very small invoices for like a couple of dollars if they went and picked up some screws or bolts or little bitty purchases. But as far as the controls that are in place with it, we can put so many parameters on those cards, we make them so if they're going to need gas, they can only pay at the pump. So you know they're not going inside to get anything, you can lock them down.
It's customizable.
You can lock them down.
And they're not allowed by alcohol or cigarettes and...
Right. I mean, we've... There's a lot of categories that are blocked, so when I go on a field trip, often the venue that we're at, no matter what we're there for, is, if it's categorized as entertainment, it, it rejects my card. So it depends what's happening. I think they're the NCC codes. However that business is coded in the credit card system, depends how it's locked down.
So if you're going to the City Museum, or the Science Center, sometimes it shows up as entertainment, so...
Or your senior trip.
The Goldie Alley.
Family Fund Center, or Grand Farm, it's right. They have to call us, oh my gosh, we're out of state.
Then we have a monthly reconciliation process.
Absolutely. Each, each bill, or each card holder signs a user agreement because that's their name on that card, they are solely responsible for it. If their tax is charged on accident, even though our number's on our card, they have to go back and get it fixed. We're not going to run around and do all that, yeah. Sometimes it takes the next month where they get, we get that credit back, but they have to go get that fixed. So they reconcile their own P-card, then it comes over to our office, and, I mean, they put all the codes in and everything, it's all online. Jennifer looks through it to make sure everything looks right, goes online, and then she's able to pull it straight into our accounts payable system, and it posts to, in our accounting software. And then I look over them as well and sign off on it, so... You know, we have those controls in place, they are still supposed to do P.O.s, with the exception of like maintenance when they're buying those little bitty parts. I mean, it really is handy for them to do that, because if they were to go to Lowe's and use like a Lowe's card, well, we only have so many of those, and, you know, it's more useful that way. And a lot of schools have really great things to say about it, because the mindset is, you give them to your people who are in charge of their budgets, they know what money they have to spend, you know, use it as it should be used.
The only administration and directors and that.
Yeah, we get that list approved, I think it was approved in July.
Yeah.
So it's all the principals, we've given them to some of the assistant principals now also, if they want them, if they find they're useful in their building. Transportation has one, but they never use it. Maintenance uses theirs, so some people don't currently use them. We do have like, what's called a ghost card, so that accounts payable department can pay things online, but we don't have a physical card for that. Curriculum has one, I think you have one, Matt Sped has one. A lot of times they have to order things off Amazon for a special needs child, and they use that quick, so...
Got to look for it.
I mean, I think it's great, I think there's a lot of controls in place, you know, because we can do so many things, U M V helps us to know how to lock those cards down, so... And the auditors look at them, they come in, they're like, where's your P-card stuff? And they're like, we're going to take a couple of months, we're going to look through everything, and they do, so...
So except Kelly for like the emergency things, like Ray would have like a little thing to buy, or Kathy, they, do they fill out like a P.O. for anything that's an anticipated expense, and then they use the P-card?
And then we have to cancel the P.O., so it is extra work, but most times they are still doing a P.O. I mean, we, we have a lot of utilization on things that we were already writing a paper check for and just took, it just took longer to get through that process, and it's an inconvenience sometimes if, you know, like you have to go to the family fund center, or somebody at the primary goes to the zoo, or, you know, field trips and things like that, and they can book them online, or if something comes up while they're there, it's not out of their pocket and they're reimbursing them.
Do any teachers have P-cards? It's just simply...
No, but a lot of schools they do.
Well, I was going to say, you know, my area, I have an account, I didn't have a credit card per se, and so I was wondering, what do you, what do your back teams do?
Our back teams, our Walmart card, our Schnicks card, they, they have it almost all the time, between them, and our, our theater play people, they, they have it quite good. And they do a P.O. at the beginning of the year for that, you know?
Right.
For all their food expenses for the year, so...
Well, and, and when I was first elected to the board and started looking at this, the one, I know it was a long time ago, the one thing that caught my eye, and nothing against you Eddie, but, but it was using P-cards to pay for camps during the summer. And that just caught my eye, I thought, whoa, you know, I just wasn't aware that even worked.
But sometimes we have parents who want to pay, give us cash for that, and they'll pay for camp online. Like a student camp, but, you know, we use a lot of the harness tickets, because the choir goes up there, you know, the baseball team goes up there too.
Also, we're able to rebate them.
We use it quite frequently to buy books. At the beginning of the school year, if our teachers come to us, hey, I'm free, I'm short, free American history books, I'm short, free science books, we're able to buy those online now, and it's so much, we can, yes, so much pressure.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns?
Did that address your concern, Mrs. Ginch?
I just wanted, just to...
And if you ever have any questions about how we're using it, feel free, call me.
Okay. Next item, also informational, student activity fundraiser with booster clubs, right?
Yeah, and I, you had actually answered some of the questions when I spoke with you on, whatever it was, I didn't ask you any of it.
Probably.
I don't know if you remember about that, because you said there was a change with how the funds are handled, is that right?
Well, typically in times past, and I'm going to keep looking back there at Mr. Moreno because he's helping with some of the conversations on this, when we do the fundraisers for our various groups, and if, whether it be football, soccer, or band, there are various booster clubs that do help, and in times past, the booster clubs would also sponsor or be a co-sponsor of the fundraiser, so therefore they would share some of the proceeds of the fundraiser. After discussion and consulting the attorney, we believe there's a better way of doing that, because if you're using students to promote the sale, then it needs to come through the school through that, through the students, and through the appropriate activity accounts. Now, if the booster club wants to do their own fundraiser and the kids go out and sell, you know, we have to delineate between a booster club card and a Hillsborough football, soccer, or band card. So we, we're working on that, we've talked to Eddie about that, and you're correct, in times past, the way it would work is the individual that was representing the card company would sell the cards, and once all the cash was brought in, they would pay cash for cards, and settle the debt that way, and then deposit cash into the respective student accounts, or they might give some money if it's a joint fundraiser, to the various booster clubs. So, Mr. Moreno, I've talked about that, discussed how we can prevent that, and further, some of the groups never had enough cash because the checks are made out to Hillsborough Schools, or Hillsborough's Band, or Hillsborough Football, that they would actually have to invoice that group after the checks were deposited. So we're moving toward everybody deposits all the money, and they invoice us, period, so we're not muddying the water between, here's the cash to pay off the cards. Even though it's more convenient for the company, it's hard for us to track what's going on. And when you excessively entangle the district fundraising money with booster clubs, the auditors aren't too fond of that, because then the auditors will need to start auditing the booster clubs because cash was raised from the students. So, that's been a long discussion process. Mr. Moreno, did I leave anything out that you'd like to add to that conversation?
No, and our booster clubs have been very cooperative with us during this process, and talking about it, they completely understand. I think the biggest thing to remember with booster clubs, which is the hardest thing for us as a school district, is they're not affiliated with us. Whether it's a high school booster club, a primary booster club, or any booster club that you have as a district, we have no control over them, we have no say over them, they are their own entity, even the foundation itself, the Hillsborough Free Foundation.
But when they bring a child into them, from a student from this district?
Mr. Corbin, am I, do I?
I'm just saying, as a person who's bought those cards from those students, I want to be understanding that it's going to...
I don't know.
We need to hammer them down, and let them address it.
Mary, I was going to say, it needs to come this direction, so, okay.
So, the process that Dr. Corbin was talking about, in the future, if it's a shared fundraiser, it'll say Hillsborough Football Booster, real big, and then football underneath, or it'll say Band Booster, real big, band underneath, Soccer Booster. We only have three booster clubs at the high school that are registered in the five-oh-three C-3.
Five-one-C-three.
Five-one-C-three. But again, they understand our process and why we're asking them to do things we're going to do, and we think it's a cleaner process. Kelly and I have talked about it, that we handle everything, it's deposited to our accounts, and then they invoice us from there, and it clearly will be confusing questions or otherwise.
And, and let's talk about shared fundraisers. I want to clarify that. That means the booster club is raising the money, and that money goes to benefit the kids. Now, the kids might be out there selling a card, but they're selling in the name of the booster club, rather than selling it for the name of Hillsborough Football themselves.
Yes.
So, I want to, because you've used that word, shared, and we want to be sure there's a line that differentiates the two.
So as we move forward as well, we want to move away from the shared concept of that. It's either going to be a booster deal, it's going to be a, a football deal, a band deal, a soccer deal, if that makes sense.
Because, because they ultimately can determine what those funds could be used for in situations, right? If it's, if it's a school fundraiser, we can maybe use it for different things than a booster fundraiser, is that correct?
Well, to answer your question, what you can't do is for the booster club to give cash for a particular group, that's where the, that's where you have issues. Typically, for example, I'll go back to the football, the football bought a trailer and donated a trailer to the football. When you get into issues, it's we're going to give you six thousand dollars cash to go buy a trailer. Because for the school, you worry about Title IX and equal representation, so that's where the water gets muddied. You have to be careful on how they present that. Now, I know our booster clubs are great, they help pay, you know, they buy our kids lunches and breakfast, I know band, my daughter being banned, they feed them when they're out on the road, they do a lot, they buy props, again, that's, we appreciate that, and in this instance, we worry more so about the accountability and the practice of excessively entangling funds, that's what all this boils down to.
The other thing that I'd like to say as well, on behalf of the boosters, because they are great stewards of our kids and our community, is that they track every single dime that goes in and out of their accounts. And they have that, and they don't have to give it to us, but they have it, and they keep track of it, and they've, they've told me that they share it with me.
Question?
Yes.
So is, I, I understand definitely the booster club, so is there no one from the school, like, on the booster club? Like, I know Guardian Hawks, you know, the administrators are there when they meet. The Hillsborough Foundation, I know the president, and are you on there?
Correct, ex officio, remember.
You know, so there's like school connection there, so the other booster clubs, are there not people that are actually from school that are...
Yes and no.
Executive Council meetings or...
For instance, with the Hillsborough Three Foundation, I'm actually on that board, so I'm at all those meetings and to that, and all that. Band boosters, if I'm around when they're meeting, I'll stop by, I'll say hi, but there's no one, the band directors may be there, when the football touchdown club meets, the football coach may be there, whenever soccer boosters meet, the coach may be there, but they're not, that's what I'm saying, it's weird because it, they're helping us, but they have no affiliation with us as well.
And we don't want to direct how they do anything, because that...
I don't know that it's a, it's a, it's a...
Well...
What about Project Prom?
I was going to say Guardian Hawks.
Project Prom is actually a five-oh-one-three C.
They are, or not?
They are not.
They're not.
Okay, thank you.
They are not. But Project Prom is a great example of a, an organization that's out there that does great things for our kids after prom to keep them safe, that...
And we have supported them by allowing them to have fundraisers during one of our events, and maybe even...
They meet our buildings.
Sometimes to Project Prom site, but we have nothing to do with their financials whatsoever.
And if you remember, I take you all the way back to the Guardian Hawks playground. Remember the big discussion of, okay, how are we paying for the playground? Accepting cash, writing checks, if you remember, Kelly, run us through that real quick, we wound up, I, each entity, did they write their own check to the playground company? Do you remember? It's been a while, I've slept since then.
Guardian Hawks wrote their own check.
I think Guardian Hawks wrote their own check, and we wrote our own check.
For our portion.
For our portion.
Correct.
Yes.
So you could give them the money and have them write a check, and they didn't give you the cash for you to write the check.
We talked about that, but that's where we're like, you can't do that. They kept it very separate.
Yep, right.
And, and in looking at this with what Dr. Corbin has talked about, and the meetings we've had, it's a procedural change, it's going to be for the better, and I think it, it helps everyone involved.
Any other questions?
Well, we got some information on the scholarships from, I think, the soccer team gives a scholarship, and then the football team gives two, I think. And I just had a question, the Brendan Goforth Scholarship, I wondered who funded it? Because in the information we got, that wasn't part of it.
The Brendan Goforth Scholarship is a scholarship that was started by the Hillsborough Youth Football Club. It was started, it was started whenever Brendan was in eighth grade and he was diagnosed with cancer, and he could no longer play football, so they started that scholarship, and that scholarship is funded by the Hillsborough Youth Football Association, or Club, or whatever they're called.
And they still continue, Eddie, to fund that?
Absolutely, to this day. They actually, they're involved still on the selection process, and then they come to senior awards night, whenever it's presented, and the family actually presents the scholarship to the, to the individual that's selected.
And then on the Susie Jean Nansel Memorial Scholarship? Who funds that one?
That is funded, much like a scholarship that we're not talking about, but I'll, I'm going to touch on it, that is funded through the soccer program, okay? And it's funded just like the Jean Stike Force Scholarship that we offer through the high school as well.
Now, I guess Jean Stike Force, is that through the basketball program?
It is, it, it's a, it's an account that was set up before I was A.D., whenever everything happened with Mr. Stike Force when he passed, and the family wanted to start that scholarship. It's funded through proceeds from the tournament, and things of that nature that helped to fund that scholarship every year.
Okay.
The Susie Jean Nansel Scholarship funded by soccer is, they pick a game during the year, like last year, I believe it was, it was the green shirt game that we had with Perryville. They promote something, childhood cancer was two years ago. Last year, I can't remember what we promoted, and I apologize for going blank, but then the proceeds raised from that night go to that scholarship, and they advertise it as such.
Okay, cool. And do you know who, who's on the selection committee for that one?
For the soccer one? Is it on the application? I don't remember.
I, no, that's why I noted it.
I believe that it's probably similar to the alumni scholarship that you referenced a second ago, that it's the current coaches that are involved in the program. There, maybe a parent from booster club is on that, I don't know, but I can find out the information and bring it back to you.
Okay. And then my last question was, was the, the football alumni scholarship, who funds that one?
Well, so, previous to the Touchdown Club being implemented, it was funded through the school, similar to soccer, and the basketball scholarship that I just talked about.
So they have like a, a game they play, and proceeds, proceeds go to the scholarship?
No, not necessarily, no. They, that's a scholarship that's been around since I was in school, actually, I, the criteria, I don't know who got it in our senior year, that's why I'm looking at you, Eric, I'm sorry.
Four years ago.
But that scholarship has been around since when I was even in school, so it's been around for a long time. I believe it used to run through school accounts, now I think it runs through the booster club account. Again, I can get information on it, but I know that that committee is the current football coaching staff is involved in that selection.
That was on the sheet.
But as far as, I, I can do some more information digging for you if you need, so just let me know exactly what you want to know.
I just want to know who funds it. You know, like, most scholarships fund are like, they have an endowment or something like that.
Sure.
And, and I, that's, I just wonder who funded all these?
Prior to the Touchdown Club being, the booster club being in place, it was funded through the school, there's an account, the money was put in, then the, the way the scholarships[1758.41] Then the, the way the scholarships work as well, just to clear up a process for you guys, is the students, when they go away to college, they bring back their first semester transcript with all the information on it, they give us their account, and we actually send the money straight to the school to go into their student account. But prior to the touchdown club, it was through school. Now, is my understanding, the touchdown club is, is running that, and I will verify that for sure.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
You're kinda spiffy tonight, I might add.
Thank you.
You know? Okay, moving on to disposal of mats. A motion for the removal and disposal of the old pole vault, actually three of them, and three-piece wrestling mats that are no longer serviceable. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. I have a big question. Don't these have to go through this bill option, surplus option according to policy?
According to policy, any excess surplus equipment will go through the auction that we have annual each year. In, in this particular instance, I think, and Mr. Moreno put that forward, the question was, one, they're, they're in our way, they're not doing us any good, they have to be moved, it takes about five minutes a forklift rather than two minutes a truck to move those mats due to the weight that they are. And I, I see Ray nodding his head, and had more than one individual hurt their back trying to move the mats. So at this point, we would like to remove those according to the executive summary put in front of you. Now, if you read down through there, you see the cost and the potential cost of the mats for moving them and removing them based upon a tonnage rate if we were to throw them in the dumpster versus individuals that are willing to come and remove the mats for you. But in reviewing your policy, it does not give you a provision to waive...
The policy?
To waive the policy.
The first thing, I mean, I could care less, except that we have a policy in place to deal with that.
Even if they're not serviceable?
Yeah. It's like all books, desks, anything that's not used anymore is surplus option.
Here's the reason, mostly, you, and this is what Mr. Moreno talked about, are we able to prove that we did not purchase that with federal funds? If you can prove you purchased it with local dollars, you're able to maybe do something different. But in from ninety-three to ninety-six, and we know that federal funds aren't spent at the high school level, but you could supplant money in the, in the primary to use your local money to buy the mats. So there's a big, hard way to prove how we purchased the mats.
So, if we follow policy, these would just kinda stay where they are until...
The surplus auction.
And then at the auction, they have to be moved to the auction site or...
Correct.
But a sign up that says, go to wherever they are.
Move to the auction site, buys better, we'll get them, and if not, they go in the dumpster. Ray pray that we'll be done in the past?
As correct.
And this year, we didn't have enough surplus to run an auction, correct?
We did not.
Right, we didn't have an auction this year. Is there gonna be enough for next year's?
Yes, there will be.
So personally, I don't see how we go against policy. Oh, do you have an opinion as to how we go about, against policy to do this?
Not going against policy, no, I have no opinion on that.
Okay, thanks.
The prop, the reason for this executive summary was because, when we talk about the pole vault mats, we're talking about each one is a sixteen-piece system. So each, we're talking about forty-eight pieces of matting that has to be disposed of. The wrestling mats are three-piece, twenty, it's the original wrestling mat we bought whenever the wrestling program started, it's a three-piece mat, literally it weighs eight hundred pounds a section, right? It takes six to eight guys to move one section of that wrestling mat. The thought behind this was, if we can get rid of it for X amount of dollars as opposed to thousands of dollars, it makes sense, but I understand we have policy and if we have to, if we have to do that, we have to do that. It's just, this was a way to get them going, get them gone, and a company that actually is gonna recycle it as opposed to just throwing them away.
Can you let them know to come to the auction?
Yeah, I can.
I mean, seriously?
I can, but...
Because...
But they're not gonna pay us to take them away, you see, but, but one of the individuals that's on it may.
Well, I was gonna say, one of them is a local martial arts, so I figured they were gonna actually use them.
I think, I don't wanna speak for him, but I think this plan is to get it resurfaced, you can get that done. Because to buy those mats, when we bought a wrestling mat a few years ago, wrestling mats are seventy, eight thousand dollars. So you get these mats and resurface them is, if you do it yourself, you could probably resurface them for a few hundred, but resurfacing them is a process that I don't really consider.
That would be their headache though.
That would be absolutely, and that's the point, and that was why I tried to put those figures on there after talking to Ray. The, the mass disposal is, it's, it's a lot because of how much they weigh. Again, you're talking about forty-eight, fifty-one pieces of mats that have to be disposed of. And we're gonna move them from where they are down to the bus garage, then once they don't sell, we have to move them from there to somewhere else, and we've had numerous people go on workman's town because of being injured from lifting them because they're so heavy. That's why we've gone to the lightweight mass of the fall.
So what's the plan to go around school policy to do this?
If you turn the camera off, I got an idea.
You're not on camera, only your voice, we don't know who you are.
I suggest we just send them by the dumpster and see what happens. Tony, the chief?
It's still moving.
That's what they do in the Soto. Out of the school district. They have bulk days today.
Vinge on my hand though that I got that way from Mother's Day, isn't it?
I think this seemed like a really great idea, that when Dr. Corwin got into policy and got back with me, I totally understand why we may not be able to do it, but I hope you also see my side of it, why this makes so much sense.
Is there an opportunity to amend that policy? Can we amend that policy?
If you start amending a policy like that, you're gonna cause problems.
I was gonna say, I think it's kind of as a legal one.
When you get into that, amend that, well, well, some things you don't have to go through, but some things do, and then you get into whole, choose of what goes through, determining what's paid with federal funds. If you were giving it to another institution and receive federal funds, you can just give it to them according to policy, but this is not one of them.
So we're looking at a cost saving?
You give the Soto and have them dispose of it.
Looking at the cost savings, if, if it goes to auction, doesn't sell, what, I mean, do we have to throw it away at that point?
I'm pretty sure, Ray, I think you have to put it in the dumpster.
And then they can come and get it out of the dumpster.
That's what I'm hinting at. And the mats are unusable, that's the other thing I wanna make sure that you understand, it's not like we can use these anymore. They're, they're unusable, and like I said, we have three sets of them, they're just to take up space where we can clean out an entire shed, the maintenance that could then use and store a lot of stuff and that needs to be stored in there, not these mats.
Now, I do not believe the policy says auction is just the fall of the year.
It does not say.
You can have a spring auction, you don't have to store them from now until the fall.
Can you have an auction where they are stored?
Yes, typically, but we'd have to move all the books and all the surplus props to the mats.
But those may not weigh as much as the mats.
True, it would take a forklift though.
Can you just have an auction for the mats?
Yes, you can, just have an auction for the mats.
If no one comes, then we'll do the two hundred and fifty dollars.
But you're gonna have to pay an auction here.
I can auction here. Ha ya, ha ya. I got fired. I'll wake you up, Scott. Sorry. Okay, any other questions? Sorry, I just lost it. I was a fun teacher. Okay, are we ready to vote? Those in favor of this motion to allocate funds for the disposal of the pole vault and wrestling mats? Those in favor? Those against? I'm sorry. Okay. Paraprofessional position, motion to approve the funds to add an additional paraprofessional to be placed or based on student needs starting at the intermediate beginning this year. So this is a current need. You getting a motion? Eric, and second? And you gonna hear a plot for Mr. Whitehead or Mr. Yonah?
We can do so, Mr. Moreno, Mr. Whitehead, Dr. Isakson, just a brief rundown is we've had a pretty significant increase in our special needs students that have transferred in this school year, specifically in the intermediate building. We've had some move in from as far as California to the district, and that'd be the state, not California, Missouri. And go ahead and speak to that a little bit if you would.
Yeah, I've actually met with the, with the administrators, we've worked with kind of everything, the master schedule, the teacher schedules, the pair, the pair schedules, worked to kind of where all the needs are. Like we said, the fifth grade population sped wide, doubled the average grade level to the rest of the district itself. We knew that coming into the school year itself. Then over the course of the school year so far, just that building alone has approximately eighteen to nineteen students for special education, not including everyone else. So that is typically almost a caseload just at that point itself. So we've met, kind of looked at all, where all the needs are, and the most efficient part of it is actually looking at a paraprofessional. There are several classrooms that we've looked at based on student needs and everything as well. So that's something that Mr. Moreno and myself have been doing over the past few weeks.
Mr. Moreno, anything to add?
We looked at and considered the need for a special ed teacher, but the, the, the pull-out rooms and the, the rooms where the kids are at, special ed-wise, will be those needs, but it's in the general ed room giving it support. When we look at our caseloads, and caseloads don't always give a true picture, so we went and looked at minutes of each of our teachers and they serve, who they serve, and we're serving about eight thousand to ten thousand minutes per teacher. We're meeting those kids' needs in the classrooms, in the special ed rooms, and in the pull-out rooms. It's servicing the kids and giving them support and in the, in the general ed room that is the issue. And so that's why we went with, instead of teacher, we went with para, to get that extra support. If that made sense, but it didn't matter.
So will this para have like special requirements or qualifications related to sped?
No, I mean, no, eventually it is, you see the I train probably, you know, who our pairs are, but...
So very likely this will continue because those kids aren't...
And that's how we put it in there, it's just for the rest of this school year, it's based on student needs, so at that point. So we will look at it in the springtime as a district, we'll look at all the student needs. We have to first look at the one-on-ones, the access to para, some of those students that have that written in, and then we base on the buildings and the caseloads at that point. So it's just for the rest of this school year for right now.
Well, when you look back at your early separation incentive plan, you had some pairs that did leave the district. So, I mean, of course, I mean, you're, you're spending money, that's, but ultimately you can't put that over what you need for kids.
That's true.
If that's what our need is, that's what our need is. We couldn't predict this time last year, we're gonna have a growth of twenty percent in the population of the intermediate building for special, special needs students. So we just have to make it happen.
Any other questions, concerns? Those in favor? Yes. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn open session, and we will reconvene executive session in fourteen minutes. Rob, Dan, and Seth, those in favor?